Perfect Dana.
All right, are we ready to open this thing and start streaming?
We're already live.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, Dave Hemmway, are you here?
Yes.
Dee Blake, are you here?
Yes.
Good. Okay. First on our list here are the Beans. So Mr. Bean, that's you up there, correct?
He's got to unmute.
Yeah, you need to unmute yourself.
On most interfaces, it's top left or bottom right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I don't see you, but I hear you.
Yeah, your video went away, but you did start talking and we heard you.
There you are.
And now we get both.
Good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, so where's Dana? Dana? So Mr. Bean.
I'm right here, yeah.
You might.
Yes.
So I'm Chris, I chair the board. Next to me is Dee Blake, renowned in these parts for the grapevine. And the DH up there is Dave Hemmway. He's another member of the select board. We also have Dana Hadley and Russell Tetrow. They are the administrators of our town. Dana Hadley is the town administrator. And then, of course, in the upper corner, Steve Adams, you may know him. And then we have a couple of folks here from VHB, but we're going to take care of your concern first. So you want a temporary RV occupancy permit. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I'm building a house on Dustin Road. Getting close to being finished, but I still need to be staying here until I get a certificate of occupancy.
How far off do you think that is, Mr. Bean?
Couple of months, probably.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
With regard to issuing occupancies this late in the year, any special concerns here?
None at all, as long as they can, they have access to water and a septic, they're good.
So how are you doing that way?
We're hooked to a state-approved septic system, the camper in my well, I'm running off of my well for water, everything but the drinking water, I haven't had the well tested yet.
Okay, you're gonna do that though, right?
Right, yeah. Well, I think with the certificate I needed anyways.
Uh huh, okay. And I mean, this is, is your camper, you're gonna be warm enough in there?
Yeah, we have been so far, so. I insulated it and got ready to get colder.
Yeah, it's gonna get real cold this weekend.
Last weekend was pretty cold.
Yeah, yeah. So Russell, you did some work which I appreciated on this. So, you know, we give, I think Dana, occupancy permits for up to 60 or 90 days.
I believe it's 90 days, Chris.
Okay.
And it can be renewed, but.
Okay.
I think 90 days should get me in here.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with it. Dave, Dee?
Is he hooked up to, oh, I'm okay. Is he hooked up to electricity with his RV?
Yeah.
On site? Now, I thought so. It looked pretty bright out there.
Yeah, he looks pretty comfortable, doesn't he?
Yes, he does.
Yes. So if neither of you have a problem with it, I would say that we're okay to issue the permit, Dana.
Okay, all right.
My only problem is that whatever the company is didn't get it done in time for him.
Yeah.
But I have no problem doing this.
What's that?
And doing a lot of it myself, that's what's going on.
Oh.
I understand how that goes.
That's for sure.
Chris, could you do a motion, please?
Sure. So I would move to grant the Beans on 39 Dustin Road, do I have that right?
Right.
Okay, on 39 Dustin Road, a temporary RV occupancy for 90 days. At the end of which you can reapply. Hopefully you won't need to.
Yeah.
Okay.
My wife said, no, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go, Mr. Bean. Good luck.
Okay, do we have to do anything? Are you guys gonna take care of that at the town?
We will, we will take care of it, sir, and I'll have Russell give you a call.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you all.
Yeah, good night.
Yeah.
Night.
Okay, Greg?
Yes.
You are up.
Okeydoke. Great, well, thank you for having us. With me this evening is Bob Landry. Bob is, came to work with VHB a little, well, almost exactly a year ago now, Bob, believe it or not. Straight from New Hampshire DOT, he was the former bridge administrator for the state. He'd worked at the state for about 32 years. So I know that what we wanted to talk about this evening is really about the bridge width. You know, last time we spoke, we were talking about, you know, the state's concern with the 28-foot wide bridge width. So since then, we had kind of gone back and revised the bridge study to go back to the 24-foot bridge width, which is the kind of the minimum requirement of the state. And that's really what kind of Ron, who was with us at the last meeting, was looking for. So, but after that, received correspondence from Dana, letting us know that, you know, I don't know Dana, if that was the select board that you'd convened with and that they were wanting to go back to the 28-foot wide bridge width.
It was from the board, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, so we wanted to kind of just convene with you once more, just to understand, you know, our best approach in terms of going back to the state to make sure that we were all on the same page. And I thought that it might be good to have Bob with us this evening in case there were any questions that you had, that he might be able to kind of shed some light on as far as how the state might be approaching these things, especially with his experience. It's very, very valuable to us for insight as far as how the state approaches some of these things. So with that, I guess I'd be interested to know where you guys were at in terms of the bridge width, and I guess if you have any initial questions or discussion topics before we just kind of talk about next steps.
So you haven't gone to the state at all with our?
Have not. And that's why I wanted to really speak with you before we did that, because I figured once we do that, then that's kind of a big first step. So I have not mentioned it to Ron. So wanted to discuss it with you and just openly before we do that, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, good. So Bob, you've seen the plans, you're familiar with the project.
Yes.
I'm wondering what you think about the state's, you know, coming back to us and wanting to do a narrower width and us wanting to sort of remain where we were. What is your opinion of this whole thing?
Well, I think, as you know, the state's got a long waiting list with the state aid bridge program. So they're just trying to make sure we don't get a lot of, or they don't get a lot of scope creep in their projects. So they're seeing the extra six feet as a way to increase that. And they're just trying to minimize that as they move forward. Their standards, we were looking them up, the minimum travel way for roadway is 22 feet for this volume of traffic. And therefore, the bridge at 24 is a minimum, but it's probably pretty close as far as the nature of the area.
Now, Greg, you know, you had proposed the plan for the bridge to be 32?
Yeah, the rail-to-rail was 28 feet that we had originally discussed, which was basically a four-foot wider shoulder. So what we're showing now is the 10-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulders on either side. And one was a six-foot shoulder instead of a two-foot shoulder on the downstream side.
Right, on the fishing side.
That's correct.
And so maybe I'm not remembering this correctly. So originally, the bridge was to be 28 feet across, and the state wanted to cut back to 24 feet.
That's exactly right.
Mm-hmm. So I guess, you know, I guess I'm curious, Bob. I know that the state aid, the bridge aid is, I know it's got a long waiting list, and we've been part of that waiting list for a while now. Are we seriously hurting our chances of getting this done, you know?
I guess I'm not quite sure what you meant by getting it done. I think right now where Ron is saying if we move forward with a 24-foot, we can get it done. If you really want to do the 28, based on what he said, they're looking for the town to contribute that difference in cost. Now, I assume the town probably doesn't have that sitting around waiting to be added into a project such as this. So as far as getting the bridge replaced and getting the 24-foot rail-to-rail, I think we can keep that moving forward pretty easily. It's whether or not you, how strongly the town feels about adding that extra four feet on that one side.
I think our concern, Bob, was we didn't want to lose our place in the queue.
For keeping it at 24, I don't think you do. If you want to push it to 28, I think there's a little more discussions and it depends on how, you know, whether or not the town has an appetite to raise the additional funds for the extra four feet, or if they're gonna use back channels and try to pressure the DOT into getting, into giving up or to building that wider bridge.
Yeah, that's sort of what my question was. I wanted to know if we were imperiling ourselves in any way. We have, we have three other bridges to do in town. And so I don't know whether the townspeople would have, are we talking about, was it $60,000 more?
Yeah, that's kind of how we were estimating it. Yep, yep. Based on the additional quantities and the wider abutments and so forth, it looked like it was in that, in that range. Yep.
Dave, you had some reservations about this, and Dee, you did too. So I'm gonna sit still for a while.
Sure. My main reservations at the time, like I wasn't on the board when we did all of the starting stuff. But my main reservation as the most recent elected board member was trying to do what the townspeople had said they wanted to do at the public hearing, which was, of course, they requested the larger bridge because of the pedestrian foot traffic that normally hangs on in that place. Whether it's fishing, whether it's people walking, jogging, biking, people stopping on the side of it with their motorcycles, et cetera, all of that happens all the time during the summer. So I guess my, the couple of questions are that that's the first concern. And we've already addressed the difference in funding. Should it not be something that we can get? So my question for both of you, especially since Landry mentioned the back-channel ways, is what is involved in trying to do that? And what does a timeframe change to if that's done?
What I've seen in the past is towns lobbying their senators, New Hampshire senators, or executive consulates to have a discussion with DOT to potentially include the extra width based on town input. It really, timing-wise, it's gonna take a little while, I'm sure, to contact one of those types of representatives or executive consulates, and then a little bit of time for them to talk and then for it to get back around. So, you know, that's what you're looking at. And I don't know how good of, I believe during Executive Council One, right, where they, new elected executive counselors, now how your relationship with, is with them.
So I guess my second question, if we are not able to do this, then the second question would be, what are we able to do as far as allowing space for this sort of pedestrian foot standing traffic? Are there limitations as to how far we can push the lanes over to the other side? For example, if they're 10-foot lanes, can we start the lane like at the edge of the bridge instead of two feet off with a standard line so that we end up with the, all of the space on one side of the bridge? Or is that not something that can legally be done because of the widths and buffers?
That, that's a, the design would show it with it down the centerline. When they come to stripe it, in, you know, the first time, they're gonna put it right down the centerline. In the future, if there's maintenance done or any paving in the area, whether or not you shift that line a little bit, you might be able to get away with what you're talking about. Maybe get it to three feet on one side and one foot on the other side. But as far as the actual design, you would have equal two-foot shoulders on both sides.
We've never had a stripe on that bridge that I know of. So is that gonna be something new?
Typically, yes, is the stripe shown, that white stripe. I think that's something for discussions. We could leave that off if you wanted to and just have the 12-foot lane.
Well, I've never had a stripe ever, and I've been there. I own the corner property. And what I'm concerned about, I think a larger bridge, a wider bridge, would make a lot less accident-prone, because I've had, I had a person killed, they went over the bridge and they hit a tree and died on my property. I've seen cars go off the side, into the water. And I grant, the people are probably going too fast and all that fun stuff. But I just thought if the bridge was wider, I would think it would be less accident-prone, because, believe me, I, before cell phones, and I had a house really close to the bridge, which I don't live in now, but because it burned down. But anyway, every winter, I would have calls and people knocking on the door to use my phone because they went off the bridge or they went onto the ditch and all that other stuff. So that's my concern. I thought if, I know, I see so many pedestrians, so many kids on all of that. So I just was kind of concerned about that. And I thought if it was a wider bridge, we might not have all that problem.
Greg, would you mind just reminding us how wide the bridge is right now? And, you know, and then, and then the 24 feet, just to help us out here.
Yeah, I believe it's, I want to say, I'm actually looking it up in the existing conditions right now. I think that it's.
18 feet.
18 feet.
Yeah.
It's 18 with a one-way on it as opposed to the 24, that would be two-way.
Correct. You're getting an extra six feet to meet the minimum New Hampshire DOT standards right on the bridge.
So if the state didn't want to do 28, I wonder if the state would do 26?
That's a discussion we can bring forth to Ron, and it would be probably better if that came from the select board as far as town officials. But definitely, that is something that you can bring forth, and I don't think it will delay the overall process all that much. You may want to CC your executive council and your senator as you're doing that, because sometimes that'll help.
Okay. Dave and Dee, what do you think about that idea?
Um, that's, I would rather see it wider than more narrow. I mean, not narrow than what it is now. I just, I just have lived through all those dangerous times. And the thing is, I think, number, where the heck are we on the queue? Does anybody know?
Yeah, we know.
What, how many numbers or years are we out?
2023, right?
Yeah.
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 So it's getting exciting.
Yeah, yeah. I think really what we're looking to do is to get it advertised, you know, towards the end of next year so that it can be constructed in 2023. Fiscal 2023 is, I think, what they're typically looking at. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah, we can advertise in October. Therefore, the contractor will get awarded the project and therefore be all ready to gear up and hit the ground running, you know, April of 2023.
So Bob, you were suggesting that the select board write a letter directly to DOT?
Yes, should be to the CIO World Key.
Oh.
In the planning commission or the community assistance.
Okay.
You could CC Pete Stamnos.
He?
Pete Stamnos, he's the director of project development.
S-T-A-M-N-O-S?
A-S.
Oh, Stamnos, okay.
And then I would CC your senator and executive council if you have good relationships with them.
Okay. Okay.
Should we bring them out to the bridge or check in in person? Would that do any good?
I think, I think that's one of the things that's tough to do with people during this COVID situation. If you had pictures of people fishing or being on the bridge, I think including that along with it wouldn't be a bad idea with a letter.
Okay. Dana, what do you think? Can we, can we focus in, I mean, it's budget season. It's a bad time for us to focus in on anything other than budget, but can we, can we get this done, do you think?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
So I could draft a letter and have you review it.
So Dave and Dee, do you want to try that?
Sure. That idea?
Okay.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, well, I'm sorry, I think maybe I should put a little article in my paper coming out. Maybe people have pictures of bridge traffic and all that fun stuff in, you know, some of the people that are around the bridge. And I don't know if the fire department has any of those pictures of the accidents that have happened up there or not, but that might be something we could dig up too. Would that help?
When's your, when's your paper coming out?
In a few days.
Okay.
Yeah, usually what the second or so, first or second.
First or second, yeah.
I think the new rail that's on the bridge and approaching the bridge, per the standards, will take care of your concern of anybody going down over. There's still gonna be some accidents if the road's slippery and they slide into the rail and that type of stuff.
Well, you know, that was the biggest problem where at Frost Lane, the, you know, was the snow would melt and then it would flow over the bridge. And of course, people aren't, you know, there's that hill, which I, I hope, what I understand, they're gonna get rid of that hill. So it wouldn't be so, you know, so dangerous once the hill is gone, because people don't realize it's there. And then it's, you know, it's too late.
I believe the hill should just be, it'll still be there, but it'll be much less dramatic.
Yeah, right, exactly. It'll be flatter.
Yeah, we're improving the profile.
Yeah.
Plus, there'll be drainage things that'll help minimize the water as far as going across the road, that's for sure.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you think about, you know, transposing the plans to, I mean, it's gonna be a big deal to do 26?
No.
Get it, okay, all right. Well, then, let's pursue this quickly and see, you know, see what their response to us is. And I'll help with this, Dana.
Okay, okay.
I can, you know, I can contact an executive council and counselor and our senator and so on, senators.
I'll draft a letter tomorrow.
What's that?
I'll draft a letter tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I guess this is the direction we're gonna try and see what the state's response is. And then as soon as we hear something back, we'll let you know.
Okay.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, great. Anything else, Greg, that you wanted, any other advice or anything like that?
Um, yeah, I guess not a whole lot from my standpoint. And, you know, I think, you know, Bob's advice was pretty good. I don't know if there's anything more that you have, Bob, for them to consider in terms of writing the letter?
No, I think that's a good way. I think one of the keys about their concerns with the October ad date is we ought to look at how long we can wait for this answer before we come back to the town.
Yeah, and that's the one thing that I want to look at internally, because we do have right-of-way process here that we have to be mindful of and so forth. And we still have to obviously advance the final design once we get to a decision on that. So, yeah, if we can move swiftly, that'll certainly help us to stay on schedule and get to, it's not October of this year, I don't believe. I'm talking October of 2022. So we do have a little bit of time, but the right-of-way process is very much a process. So we want to be able to navigate that, so.
Okay, well, we will, we will move quickly.
Fantastic. Let us know if you have any questions. You have the latest engineering study with the plans in it with the 28-foot width. Let us know if you have any other questions or if you need anything else from us, and we'd be happy to.
Greg, could we give them a cross-section of the bridge based on this new width so that they could supply that with the letter?
Sure, yeah, the 26-foot instead of the 28, because what you've got now is the 28. So, and I guess we'd be looking to do that all on the one side. So instead of a six-foot shoulder, we just go to a four-foot shoulder, right?
They won't, they won't do that. You want to do three and a three.
Okay.
We want to show that, and we can show the narrower bridge too, but we can provide those to the town.
Okay, so three-foot shoulders. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Gosh, three-foot shoulders. I understand what Dave was thinking, you know, in his comment. With three-foot shoulders on either side, it's just so tempting to steal at least one of those feet and move it over. But we couldn't, we could not do that legally until, well, if we don't, well, if we don't have a middle line drawn, then.
Then people will just use it however they use it. Is a middle line being drawn required as part of the project by the state? Or can we paint our lines after it's done?
To be striped, in other words, can we take the striping out of the project? That's an interesting question. I, I'm not sure about that. Bob, have you ever seen that?
I, we can check on that. I, I don't know if that's, I don't know. There's always some discussions that can happen later with a contractor too that. But I, I think the. But I I think the middle line may stay, but definitely the next time. You need to restripe it. You can always slide the truck over just a little bit.
Yeah, I'm really good at that. So I'll remember I'll remember that. I'm good at this. I'm good at this. Okay, well, thank you both very much for being here.
All right, you're welcome. Yep, let us know any other questions and uh, yeah, we'll look forward to uh seeing uh how everything, everything works out.
Okay.
Greg, will you be emailing me that uh updated um cross section?
Yes, yep, we can do that. We'll probably get that over to you tomorrow, I would presume.
Nice to meet you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Yep.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. Um. So Steve, police cruiser replacement.
Yes. So. Um, I Phil sent you a uh where we can plan on taking the money from. Um, so that they're giving us twenty-one-nine for the car, but because they're taking a thousand dollar deductible out of it. We can recoup that thousand dollars from the other insurance company and Primex said they'll collect it for us, uh so we. We will plan on that down the road that we can put back into the budget. Uh, but we can take ninety-five hundred dollars out of the police maintenance um expendable trust. On ninety-five hundred and uh we can take three thousand four hundred thirty-three thirty-five out of the police equipment and that should cover it. We have sixty days to pay for it anyway, which is good. They'll do a sixty-day billing cycle on it. Um, but this does not, this does not include the equipment inside. This is just the cost of the car. So the equipment, Primex said they will cover seventy-five percent of anything. That will not fit from the twenty eighteen into the twenty twenty-one. They'll cover seventy-five percent of it, which is really good as far as I'm concerned. Um, we would have to pay for that all on our own when we put a new car in anyway. So we stripped out everything we could out of the car. That we can use. We're going to try and salvage anything that we can use out of it because most of it's new equipment. Um, so that should help cut a lot of the costs down. Today, we uh. Jacked the car up and took all four brand-new tires off that had two hundred miles on them, replaced them with tires that. Just barely passed inspection and uh. We talked to the, we talked to the insurance company and they said. It's going to salvage, so they're okay with that, and I was glad because uh I didn't want to lose four brand-new tires.
Right. Um, I have a question, Steve.
Yes.
Um. Is it possible that, what were you saying Dana about this earlier about Primex billing?
Well, yeah, I was trying to keep. Um. The actual twenty thousand out of the towns books. And I do need to talk with Primex about that. I thought I would do that tomorrow after I went to this meeting. To see if we could do that. Otherwise, if we have to run it through our books with gross budgeting, we're going to have to hit the budget someplace. Um, and.
I asked that question, Dana.
You did? Oh, good.
And they said the the money will come back to the town, made out to the town.
Okay, well, that answers my question then. So um. In that case, um, we would know where to take the twenty thousand nine hundred from.
That's going to be the.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we can still, we can still approach them and see if we can do it. Um, you may be more persuasive. I just asked them if it was possible.
Well, I mean. I don't know if I feel a hundred percent comfortable with the whole process, however. Um, I'm trying to keep it away from the budget, otherwise. Um. We may, we could count it as an expense, add to the expense and then count it, add to the revenues and have it balanced. At the end of the day. It balances out. It's just how it is pers- you know, perception.
It's going to make your book work a little more difficult.
One that uh might make bookkeeping easier if it is allowed and possible. Is when we get the check, can we put that check into the? Police Cruiser Fund instead of as a normal revenue.
You mean credit the expense?
No, no, um, so when we, uh, I don't have the budget sitting in front of me at this exact second, but um. Like, we've got the Police Cruiser. I think it's an ETF.
Yes.
And can we deposit the check into that? And then use the Police Cruiser ETF for the purchase?
I would have to check with the trustees. I believe you need a warrant for the trustees to do that.
Okay.
Well, let's hope sixty days and we don't have to put off our town meeting.
Yeah.
You know we're going to.
I am afraid of that, but I'm kind of hoping we. Things may get better, I hope.
Well, I just signed up. I was just able to sign up for my vaccination today and it's it's mid-March for me. And A, I hope there's vaccinations to be had, but you know, I think. And 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 Sununu was saying tonight that, you know, he thinks that as more vaccination rolls in, that people will. Be pushed up in order to accommodate more people earlier.
Yes.
Um. So if more people can be accommodated earlier. Then, you know, maybe. Maybe we don't have to push it off until May or June.
I hope.
Yeah.
I think we're going to be dealing with how to do this.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I I I, like, if we're looking at a sixty-day time period, then. It doesn't make sense to do something that is requiring a warrant. Because we can't, we can't, we can't even guarantee that the warrant will be presented to vote on by that time period.
You're right.
Right. So.
Well, we have to have the warrant out the twenty-second. That hasn't changed, of February.
Hmm. Hmm.
But I mean, people won't be able to vote on it until town meeting and even.
Absolutely true, yes.
The normal time that's really close to our sixty days if we're going out from now.
Yes.
The only, the only solution to that would be to have a virtual town meeting. And um, you know, we can do that. We don't, we don't want to do that, but we could do that, and we have. An extenuating circumstance here that would supply some energy into really considering a virtual town meeting. So that's just something to think about.
It's a possibility.
Well.
And Greg, you need a car.
Yeah, I need a car.
So Steve, what is the plan? You have a plan for a car? Are you going to rent something or what?
Nope, if you if you sign that tonight, I will pick up a brand-new car on Wednesday.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, we can't sign it tonight. Can can Dana sign it? Oh, no, he's at home.
Well, if. Yeah. No. Because um, I mean, if we have to pick it up on Thursday or Friday, that's fine, but it'll be ready for pickup on Wednesday.
Okay. So I can be, I can be at your office tomorrow morning, Dana.
Okay, well, I could, you know, if you were, if you approve the purchase tonight. I could send this out on um DocuSign and then I could ask Dee to come in.
Yeah, I can do that.
Um. So that I'd have your signatures. If you're, I mean, I don't think we have a choice. We have to buy a car. It's. Um, and we're just going to have to live, I'm, I've talked to the DRA about um. How to do some of the accounting around it, and I haven't gotten the answer up wanted, which is probably good. Uh. But we'll have to figure out how that works. I mean, you know, it's, I think we're lucky the insurance company is paying us. Um, people would be pleased to have a problem like that, but here we are.
Are we allowed to take that out of the police equipment line item? Or is that not, okay.
Yeah.
So I, it looks like then the probably, the probable answer is we. Increase the police equipment budget line item for this coming year. Well, for this year, I should say.
Hmm.
Yeah, the police maintenance fund. Um, I'm.
Are you thinking of the operating budget, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All the others would have to be approved warrants before we could use them, whereas the standard operating budget is the standard operating budget.
And then offset that with the revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if the revenue is going to come into the normal revenue stream anyway for that offset, it won't change taxes any. Because it'll be revenue and spent. It won't be.
Yes, it will not affect the tax rate, yeah.
So so I think that's probably the the most straightforward way to do it, and we can very easily explain that. That's what's happening when we explain the budget for the police department.
Good.
I think that's a good way to do it and uh. That way it would show the police budget overdrawn for the entire year, starting at the beginning of the year.
Gee, thanks.
Just let her throw that out.
Okay, I'm going to have to use last year's numbers.
Sorry. Couldn't help it.
So so how would I make this motion?
Uh, you would make, for now, you'd make a motion to um purchase uh this twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer. Utility Interceptor from. What is it? Colonial Municipal Group in Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Oh, for heaven's sakes, a twenty-twenty-one Plymouth?
Plymouth is the location.
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-twenty-one.
Ford Interceptor.
Yeah.
Oh, what?
Utility. It's a twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer utility interceptor.
If you have a copy of the purchase order, Chris, it's right on that.
Okay, under accounts payable?
Um, no, it should have, um, it would be the email that Phil sent you um over the weekend.
I don't think you can see it.
Oh.
I guess he sent it to you this morning.
Yes.
Okay.
Shall I just do this to try and make it easier?
Oh, if you have it right there, that would be great. Thank you.
I would move to uh the police department to purchase the twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer Utility Interceptor. For total of thirty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents from Colonial Municipal Group in Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good.
Love it.
I know.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you taking those new tires off. It's a man after my own thoughts.
Oh, absolutely. I think if anything we could take out of it, we can use, I'm going to steal.
Is the new car cheaper without tires, Steve?
Keith, I never thought it. We'll have to haul some down and carry it back.
Is it possible that there could be a town out there that it that is purchasing a used or a whatever? Whatever year. Oh, it would have been a twenty-twenty. Right? A twenty-twenty vehicle? I wonder if we could resell some of the equipment. That will not fit into the twenty-twenty-one.
The only equipment that that, the only vehicle that that will fit, that equipment, is out to two thousand and nineteen. After two thousand and nineteen, it changed, so the twenties and twenty-ones.
Oh, okay, so maybe there's a town out there that's looking at up to twenty-nineteen.
Well, I tried to find a twenty-nineteen new car to buy, and there are none. That I, they did a nationwide search. Twenty-twenty is the only cars that available, and. The twenty-twenty-ones are a hundred and one dollars more, so we took a twenty-twenty-one. Um, it's just.
What equipment is not going to transfer over?
Um, the cages, the center console, almost all the lights, because the the body on the new one, the twenties and twenty-ones. Is ten inches wider. The inside curvature of the vehicle is completely changed, so it just doesn't fit. Um, we can retrofit one of the cages. It's two cages, there's one between the driver and the backseat and one between the backseat. And there, where a third seat would eventually go. Um. We can retrofit the one directly behind the driver with an adapter kit, and it fills that in with Lexan. So that's what we're going to do. That's going to save us about six hundred bucks. Um. We can't use the the second cage. Uh, the outside lights, we took those off. We can use those. I can use the siren box, which is twelve hundred dollars. The siren is gone because everything in the front is destroyed. Um, so this is still quite a bit that we can use from the other car.
Okay. All right, so we met or ready to move on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
You're going to stay with us, Chief? Are you going to?
Actually, I'm going to go have supper.
Okay.
Unless you have questions.
I forgot to uh say it while I was doing it. Um, Dana, the purchase order number. For that was twenty-one dash five dash PD. Sorry, I'm not used to making emotions. Do I need to make a motion to amend it or anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I I lost you temporarily. We will include it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you have no more questions?
No, that's it.
If you need me, just pick up the phone and call.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You guys have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Um, let's skip over to town investment policy. And take care of our new business.
That is, um, I'm putting that on the agenda, Chris. Um. Bruce asked me if it could be updated and basically it's um. He would like to have it reaffirmed uh in preparation of the auditors. The last time it was done was twenty fifteen.
So Dana, I read through this thing.
Yeah.
Where where, do you know where our investments are being held?
Um, they are being held at Franklin Savings Bank, um, for the most part, yes.
Okay, so Franklin Savings Bank, invest them in in some way?
We um, we use what? A sweep account, and I believe they do overnight repurchase agreements with that. Um, and and we get a higher interest rate, although it's abysmal still. Um, but obviously, we cannot invest in unsafe investments, and so this does satisfy that requirement.
Hmm. Okay.
And depending on the time of year, um. We might be a little thinner right before tax time, so.
Hmm.
So how do we update this? Do we go talk to the bank people or, I mean?
No, it's really, what I'm looking for Dee is um. I wanted to bring it up tonight and I wanted to um just have you aware and maybe at the next meeting. A motion to um to reaffirm the. Investment policy if there are no other changes that you might suggest. I have taken some time and I've looked at this. And I've compared it with uh other communities. Um, and they all say the same thing.
Oh. And we're not reinventing the wheel.
No, no.
Okay.
No. So I I guess, Chris, that's all that, you know, unless you were ready to reaffirm it tonight, um. Which you could do as well.
I mean, it looked.
It's a lot of words.
It is.
Do we need to re-sign it and run it by legal or anything like that?
Yes, yes, you do.
To reaffirm it.
Yeah, you, yes, you do, and once, if you were to reaffirm it, I would make the sign, the appropriate signature page and get them signed. Also, there's a section on the back that I would need to update as far as um the key personnel.
The um. Yeah, the key personnel. Changed. Wow, since Roger Becker. Huh. Okay. Um. I I. I, I, well, maybe, you know, why don't, why don't we all take the time to read through, through this and, and think about it? It's probably gonna be, you know, I'm thinking that we should eventually reaffirm this. I was, I was actually hoping we could do something that wouldn't be too dangerous for the town, but would yield us some more money and, and be pretty steady. And, and that would be to invest, to invest it somehow in green, in a green income account, which really has, doesn't have the highs and lows of a regular stock market account, which would not be a good idea.
To do that, Chris, you would really need the assistance of the treasurer. Um, because he's responsible for these investments.
Hmm.
Um, so I'm, you know, that might be something we may ask, if, if you're interested in that, we should ask Bruce to come to a meeting.
And I, I would say that while green stuff in general is more stable than the market, it's not a guarantee, which is, and we're basically required by law to have a guarantee that it can't go lower.
Right.
And so what we, what we could do is if everything is just sweep accounts right now, what we could do and, and is in here as far as allowable investment in, uh, instruments. There's actually a section for that. Um, is we could do things like use uh, US Treasury uh, stuff and get short-term bond notes and the like. Uh, or things like the bridge, because we can get a treasury for a year. Uh, and while it's not gonna give us much more than interest, it should give us a little bit more than interest. Um, because we know that we won't use those funds in the bridge fund for that period of time.
Um, I think most of the repurchase funds actually probably are uh, US uh, securities.
Most likely.
Yeah.
But those are the kinds of things that we can look at to maybe try and get a little bit more back. Um, it's probably not going to affect things a lot unless we're, unless we're generally keeping a large amount in there all the time and not using it for a long time. And that's not how we try to run our funds. We try to run our funds to slowly get up to what we need and then use it. So, uh, for example, the, the road construction uh, funds for, you know, we fund it, but then we use it with generally for the most part in the same year.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, it's that, it's that balance between growth and liquidity. You know, the money, the money has to be available.
It would probably be fair to put, say, half of the salt shed uh, fund into something that's gonna last at least another year.
Hmm.
And the same thing with the, like I mentioned, the bridge fund. Uh, you know, we could put an amount that is above what we think is going to be used for white plains. And like, okay, this is set aside for closed pin bridge. We can put that in for, say, two years, because we know it's not gonna hit until twenty twenty-three. Um, so those are the kinds of things that we could do, but I mean, they're basically already directed to be able to do that. So whether it's the trustees or the treasurer, so I don't know the exact mechanism for who makes the decision. Uh, or maybe it's the bank, but they're possible.
It sounds like a conversation with Bruce might be a good idea.
Yeah, but those are all possible in this already, so we don't.
Yeah, I believe the statute um, gives that to the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
I would have to review that, but um, but I'm sure he'd be glad to talk to you about it.
We'd, we'd put him on first thing. You'd have to tell him. He'd be very, very first thing. And I think that meeting starts at five thirty, doesn't it? Our next meeting?
I think so.
Yeah, so that would work for Bruce. So anyway, okay, um, well then, let's, let's sit on it for a week and ponder.
Inter.
So, so I will point out that that is basically directing the treasurer. That's not uh, going to affect whether or not we reaffirm this. Because all of the, all of the stuff that we just mentioned is already in here in investment instruments. It's already allowed.
I just wonder.
Oh, sorry.
More specifically, um, you know, if he would be, if he would be open to doing that. I mean, it's allowed, but is he, are we doing that? Because I think, you know, I think it makes sense. So. Okay. Alright, so the next, the next thing, US Cellular Tower Modernization Plan.
Russ, did you want to speak to that?
I can. So I've been talking with US Cellular. They wanna modernize their tower. They're trying to replace some equipment. The last time they did this is two thousand eighteen. They're not proposing any additional height or any additional footprint.
Hey, Russ, where is this thing?
So it should be right in the SharePoint.
No, no, no.
Oh, it's, it's right around Dustin Road.
Yeah.
Can't see it. Just a, a road behind somebody's house.
Yeah.
It's an access right off of Dustin Road that then goes along part of the uh, um, the power lines and then goes off into the woods.
Hmm, I wonder if that's on town on land?
I don't believe so.
No, it's, it's not.
Okay.
The site address is listed as eight Dustin Road. And the second page of the, the handout that's on SharePoint shows you the uh, Google Maps location for it.
And I can't, I cannot remember the girl's name. She went to this, my school with my daughter. But she does have on her mailbox, she has a tractor on top, a green tractor. That's, that's opposite where the driveway is to go up to this tower. But you can't see the tower from the road. Now, do we, do we get money for any upgrade? Do we get more tax money on all these, or?
Um, um, I can't tell you how much, but the, the short answer is yes. Um, of course, there's always a complicated formula to do it, the assessment, how, how much it would affect the assessment and so forth. But I believe an upgrade or addition or whatever would up their assessment.
Okay.
So that's how we would do it.
That's what I would assume if they had the more, because they're making more money on every tower that, every, everything that shows up on there. It means some money to them.
So, so Russ, can you continue? I'm sorry that I interrupted.
Not a problem. So basically, I talked to Therese about it, and she said the process is the, basically, we bring the plan to the board. The board reviews that they agree that there's no, gonna be no additional height, no additional footprint. Then it's approved, and then I submit the letter back saying that the board reviewed the plans and says they can move forward.
Okay, so the, the tower stays put. The footprint doesn't change. They're just upgrading the electronics.
Correct.
Oh. Well, I don't see a problem with that.
They do add a couple different cables and stuff up, up the tower and whatnot to do it. But yeah, the tower is the same. You're not gonna see or notice any difference.
Right.
There will just be more equipment that has a higher cost value, so our assessment for them should go up.
Good. Bring it on, I say.
We like that.
So, okay, um, are we supposed to, what do we have to do here?
We're looking for a motion to approve.
Okay, I moved to approve the US Cellular Tower Modernization Plan in Webster.
Second.
Do I need anything else on that, Dana?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Is it not worth including uh, without additional footprint or height? Well, I mean, it's not in this plan, but.
Well, it does, it won't hurt. It won't hurt.
Oh, I, somehow I got the impression, I'm sorry about this. I got the impression that they had said that their footprint would remain the same.
They did.
Yes.
But I'm saying that we might want to include that in the motion that they are not to increase the footprint or height. Just in case the plans change over time.
Okay, so I, I moved to accept, um, I moved to approve the um, uh, now, the US Cellular Moderniz, Tower Modernization. I forget how I said that.
Yeah, the tower, the modification to the existing tower.
Okay, um.
As according to the plans, you might say.
Yes.
Yeah, that works.
Yes, according to the plans. Um, assuming that these modifications will not exceed the current existing height or expand the existing compound at the base. Using their words.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um.
Next listed is abatements.
Yes.
That's once again me.
That's Russell again.
Okay, Russ.
So I, it has been brought to my attention by Karen. She submitted a request from Edward Klaus, who submitted his current use application back in February. And at some point, it got lost and wasn't signed until August. So he submitted me the email chains that he'd received from Therese, and Therese has confirmed that the assessors lost his paperwork. And then it wasn't signed to August. However, he did make the deadline to put his last acre of land in current use after his house. I think he said it burnt down, and then he demolished it, but the last acre in current house use, but it's still assessed on the tax card, which means he got billed in this current tax cycle for that house, when it should have been in current use.
For the house lot, for the house lot.
For the house lot, for the house lot.
No.
How much land is that, just out of the, what?
How big is the lot, Russ?
You're muted, Russ.
Where is it?
Oh, I would have to pull it out. It's uh, one thirteen Little Hill Road.
I think the entire piece is somewhere in the vicinity of eighty acres.
Okay.
And this is a one acre.
And it's just one acre that um, was out of current use to support the house lot. And his intent was to put the entire piece into current use since the house.
Okay, so he wants an abatement on that one acre?
So we have, the tax bill that he received um, last month includes that um, house lot assessment.
Correct.
Is that right, Russ? Yeah.
Yep.
And so we would propose to um, get the pricing change from the house lot to the current use and abate him the difference.
Okay, do we, do you, has that been calculated yet?
We have, we need to, well, I guess we were waiting to see what you felt about it, and then we were gonna send it to the assessors to have them calculate it.
So the assessors, are the assessors the ones that lost the application initially?
I'm not certain.
I'm not sure if it's the present ones or the last ones. However, um, we're, we're going to just send copies of the paperwork and keep the originals with us from here on in.
Okay, good idea.
Um.
And so we, we're only, we're talking about.
So we really should have had an amount for you to consider. I'm sorry I didn't think about that. Um, but maybe if we brought that back to you, if you're, if you're, if you think it makes sense to abate that, and, and I feel it makes sense to abate that.
I, I agree with you. I think that it does.
Um, we'll come back at the next meeting with a dollar amount, because you'll need to have that in your motion.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good, that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then property inventory mailings. What is that?
So this is, yeah, again, it's a busy night for me. So this one's more, normally, in a normal year, we would give the property inventory forms out at election and town meeting.
Right.
Since town meeting has the possibility of being postponed for the foreseeable future. I wanted to know if you just wanted me to mail them all out ahead of time, especially since COVID, there might not be as much of an election turnout. Knock on wood, hopefully we still do. And also, the mail's been taken way longer than normal because of COVID. And I just wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity to receive that in a timely manner.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Russ, how many are you mailing?
Uh, one thousand five hundred and seventy around.
And, and maybe you could combine some of those with the same owner?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're talking just under eight hundred dollars for postage.
Ooh, and how mu, how much do we have in that budget? What portion of the postage budget is that? I, you know, I don't think we have an option, though. I mean, we need to get this information from people.
You have to get the, yes, you're, you're required to get the inventory out. Um, I am going to tell you what you have in the postage budget.
You know, I had an idea, though. I wonder if we could keep our costs down? If we um, made an effort to contact people, for example, um, maybe Dee could put a banner on the front of the grapevine. Um, you know, maybe people come in and pick up their property inventory sheets. Um, I don't know how people would feel about doing that with COVID. But you know, maybe some people would, would feel safe doing that. Eight hundred dollars is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Uh, we have a proposed budget and postage of seventy-five hundred. My concern with that, Chris, is we need to keep track of these. Now, obviously, many times in the mail, um, people may say they did not get them. And as you know, we get to the point where we're charging penalties and, and it becomes a little um, difficult to decide where is where. Um, so that's my only comment about having people come in and take it. We could note that they took them, and I think that's probably what happened when they used to hand them out at town meeting. Um, which is a great idea. Um, that's, that's my only comment, is just making sure they get there.
Right.
Um, so maybe it would make sense for us to basically say that um, I don't know, wi, within the next two or three weeks, if you haven't picked it up, we'll, we'll send it out.
Well, I'll.
If someone's already coming in, then, you know, we can hand, make sure to hand it to them. And that gives time for Dee's paper to say, hey, if you're going to town hall, make sure you pick this up, so we don't have to charge more on everybody's taxes to pay for the postage.
There you go. Way to throw that in there. Is there, is there some place where if somebody came into the town hall, they could fill out their inventory form right then and there? Which is what most people did anyway. Um.
They're welcome to go into the conference room and use the table.
Okay.
Russ would need to keep track of who picked their, their um, inventory up, but he's pretty good at that, so.
I also wonder if on the mailing, Russ, if, if, if we could have, are, are we capable of um, customizing our envelopes here?
So I think we usually use the windowed envelopes, and those are customized. But Dana, you've done this before. Can't we just fold the inventories and put postage on the inventories? So the concern with that is they might get damaged in the.
Right.
I have done that to save envelopes, but I don't know if it really saved in the aggravation that it takes to make sure they are together when they go out.
So, but the point that I was gonna make is sometimes when people see something coming from the town, even though it has their personal name on it, um, unless we say something on the outside of the envelope, you know, a mandatory response requested, um, something like that that gets people to actually open up the envelope.
I might have a stamp for that in the office. I can check to see if that's, we have a whole bunch of stamps that I could just, maybe there's an important stamp or something like that I could just stamp on.
Okay.
That would take that much effort.
Okay, great, something like.
Chris?
Yeah.
This is Tara. I just, I was wondering if you would want to look up stamps dot com? Because you can save at least five cents and, um, a stamp on stamps dot com. They give you a, a free scale and free stamps and everything else, and it's all postal service.
Tara, what's the price of a first-class stamp?
Fifty-five cents.
Okay, because we pay fifty-one.
And you might be able to get it even cheaper with stamps dot com. I would just, just look it up on the computer. I would just, just look it up on the computer. I haven't used it, but I know, I, I hear about it all the time and a lot of customers use it.
And is that, that is run by the postal service?
Well, I know you can also ship through UPS. At a, at a discount through stamps.com. So I don't, I know they work with the shippers. But I don't know if it's necessarily, I mean, it comes out as US postage and you can get things printed on it. Um, and I would also say if you kept the, the local mail separate from the out-of-state owners. Um, and give, give Luanne the bundle of local mail. It'll get delivered by her and by the other two routes the next day.
Oh, so that would be all of, um, zero, three, three, oh, three inventories?
Yes. And that way, we keep it separate. It doesn't get sent out to Manchester and put through the machines and everything.
Okay.
So then all Russ would have to do is sort out all of the out-of-state property owners then?
And I do those anyway because those get mailed out immediately once they're printed.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you need some rubber bands, we can drop some rubber bands in your mailbox.
We, we would love that, Tara.
I knew you would. I used to do it. Okay, yeah, if you need any other, any other questions about stamps.com or anything else, you know, just let me know, but I'll, um, I'll talk to Luanne about it and she can, she can look for it, whether you have them in boxes or just rubber banded. And I'll tell her to keep that separate and that way it, you won't have to worry about damage or, um, them getting lost.
Okay, we'll, we'll let, um, you or Luanne know when we're ready to mail them.
Okay, yeah, just let Luanne know.
Okay.
Cause, uh, you know, she'll be on and, and she'll take good care of you.
Oh, I know she will. Thank you.
Okay, that's enough of my comments.
Well, in, in that case, if everything gets to stay local that way and, and as Pataras' comment of not really worrying about damage, we could probably just tri-fold them and, uh, put the stamp on and hand them over.
We could.
Cause we'd have to tri-fold them to stick them in an envelope anyway, so.
Right. Tri-fold them with a tape or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, so where, where are we going with this? We're gonna try to mail them out. Is that what we're saying?
I thought we said we were going to, um, put a notice in Dee's newspaper. We can put a notice on the web. Um, we'll give people a date that we're going to mail them, but if they'd like to come and pick it up in person, they can and they certainly can fill it out in the office.
Okay, now, the big question for you and Russ is, this may mean a lot of traffic in town hall. I, you know, I don't, I mean, I want you both to think carefully about whether you want to have, everybody's gonna be wearing masks anyway. Right? Even if they're in the conference room.
You know, obviously we're concerned about safety, but I mean, the building is open, the clerk's office is busy. Tax collector has been, had a lot of traffic, so I, I really don't picture a big change in the traffic flow, um, with people doing this.
Okay. Okay. So Dee, are you?
Yes, I am. I can do it.
You're comfortable with this?
Sure, anything to save a nickel.
So do you have room on your front page?
Sure. I haven't even started my front page yet, so.
Above the fold, Dee?
Yes, above the fold, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks for that, Tara. That's helpful. Okay, so we've got a plan then.
What date do we want to use?
That's the question. Therese didn't used to mail them out until the end of February for the out-of-towners.
When do they do, Russ?
Uh, they're due April fifteenth.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get really, really ahead of schedule on this because I want to make sure I have plenty of time to get it done.
Good. So what about March first, maybe?
That should be doable. I was gonna try to mail the, the out-of-stairs out this month.
Yeah, the out-of-stairs can be mailed right away.
Yeah.
Right.
But we can do, um, I'll do, I could do a February and, um, when do they normally have to be back? By the end of, what'd you say, end of March?
I think he said April fifteenth, yeah.
What, uh, eight, oh.
April.
We can do a February and maybe a March in the front page and get people to pick them up. And then we can, you know, say they have to be returned and then the rest you can mail out, whatever is not taken out.
Well, I'm just concerned about the putting the notice too early because I don't have them printed yet. I have all the papers. I can print them.
Oh.
But they're not printed yet.
But, well, the thing is you can always make a list if people, well.
When do you expect they can be printed by?
I mean, um, Karen said she was gonna show me how to do it because I've never used that before and it's the same software that we use for the tax bills. So I could probably, if I talked to Karen, maybe get them printed by the end of the week.
Oh, that'll be.
If, if I needed to have them or the beginning of next week.
So the first thing would be for February first or second in Dee's paper. And if we announced it, then you should be able to have them, them printed because that's a week and, and a little bit. So if we say that, for when they can start picking them up, uh, then when do we want to actually do the close off? We've got a select board meeting on the twenty-second of February. If, if, you know, they've commonly gone out in February, but we're worried because a lot of people would do it in person and may not think to do the mailing and it'll take longer time in the mail, then we probably don't want to be waiting until March.
Yeah, that's, that was why, concerned why I was bringing it up early to make sure I had plenty of time to accommodate if I had to mail them out earlier. What is town meeting gonna be?
That's what I was gonna say.
I thought it was.
Voting at least.
Yeah. Cause usually they mailed them out right after voting or town meeting.
People, yeah, people pick them up. They used to pick them up at voting too.
Well, voting would be the first Tuesday in March.
Wow, that's March second?
Yep.
Wow.
But I think we should be able to have them at least printed by the beginning of next week. Don't you agree, Dana?
Oh, I, I, it's not gonna take you very long, Russ.
Unless we don't have ink in the printer, but I haven't checked, so.
So he, here lies the second question. You know, if we're doing, if we're doing that voting and normally people have been handed their stuff at voting and then returned for town meeting. The voting time isn't gonna change. It's only the town meeting portion time that might change. So it would be pretty easy to say, what, to, to have somebody there like, okay, you're turning in your ballot, here's your inventory form. Cause Michelle's normally sitting there anyway, collecting ballots. Um, so we've got.
So will the selectmen have to be there?
Yeah.
Voting day, so there'll be plenty of people.
And while I wouldn't expect like the entire town to turn out because they usually don't for just our select board donations and stuff, unfortunately. That, I think that's gonna be your best bet to get the largest number of people.
Well, we could do that. I mean, it's, we just are trying to leave enough, um, give people time to get it back, but I would think four weeks ought to do it.
Well, and, you know, especially if we know that, that the, I mean, out of state, yeah, let's just do it and get it done with, but for those that are in town, uh, that Tara mentioned, you know, it's, it's gonna be a one-day turnaround because we hand them to Luanne and then it goes out and gets delivered the next day. If, since we know that it's not going through all of the machines, not going to do what a lot of mail has been doing and take a trip around the country four times before it shows up. Since we know it's not going to do that, we don't really have to worry about that delivery time and, and try to push it up super early.
Are we, are we sure it's the first Tuesday and not the second Tuesday of?
I'm sorry, it's the second Tuesday.
Thank you. I, that was bothering me. I said, wait a minute, I.
No, I'm sorry, Dan. It's the second Tuesday. I'm in the wrong state again.
Well, I'm glad I remembered. I'm just looking it up in my. I know because the school board is always a Thursday before a town meeting.
It, it's the ninth.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll forgive you.
Okay, good.
Does this go to tax collector postage or does this go to the standard, uh, executive postage?
It goes, we have postage all departments and that's where it would go.
Okay. Um, and you said if we sent all of them, it would cost us how much?
Uh, just, yeah, I'm just figuring roughly at fifty-one cents a piece. Uh, let me, I should be more exact.
No, so you said it was about thirteen hundred?
Fifteen seventy, he said.
Fifteen seventy? Okay, so if we just say fifty cents and cut it in half, then we're, and round up, that's about eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's where I came up.
So if we get, let's see, if we get like three hundred people or so to come vote uh, for select board stuff. Um, and the, you know, the town offices. That drops it down to about twelve hundred or so, which gives us somewhere around six hundred or so, uh, in, that we would expect to be paying for this.
And we would use envelopes for people who have more than one. They may have, some people have two or three, four or five, so it would make sense to put them together.
So does it sound like we should probably add about six hundred into postage for all departments? Or was some of this accounted for because that would have to have been done already?
I, I think the postage, uh, budget is fine the way it stands. The proposed budget is fine.
Okay, because I'm seeing no change in postage. It's four thousand in twenty-twenty and we used all but seven bucks and it's four thousand for twenty-twenty-one proposed. At least in the one nineteen budget worksheet that I still saw.
Right. Oh, I was on the wrong line. Okay, that would make a difference. Okay.
You're still in Vermont.
Yeah.
So don't you, you think, Dave, that maybe we should put it in the paper anywhere people want to stop in?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, put, okay, so, alright, this is just.
But I'm just trying to think of different, of the timing and how many people are likely to do this so that we can A, tell them we're gonna mail them after this time, so don't come asking after that.
Yeah.
And, and B, then we can actually budget for that postage. Cause we need to have that reflected if we're gonna expect to use it.
Because not, the thing I'm thinking, not everybody has property. If there's two people that live in a house of three or whatever, they all don't have an inventory.
Right.
So that, you know, so you can't count three hundred people voting doesn't mean there'll be three hundred in, uh, inventory.
True, true. But, um, I imagine we had to mail out at least some of these previously.
Oh, I'm sure.
Everybody was gonna stop in and pick them up. So.
I don't know. I think, I don't, that, that's, yeah, that's an odd, that's an odd thing because they always hand you the inventory when you go into town meeting and then I usually fill them out and, you know, I don't want.
Yeah, if you walked into vote, if you walked in for town meeting or if you walked into any of the offices, you know, for like the month before that, it was always, and go make sure you, you know, and talk to her and get your inventory.
And that's, you know, that's good. So if we put it in the paper, at least in February and then a reminder in March. Because you're gonna always mail the, the ones that are to non-residents, they're going out anyway.
So, so it sounds like maybe, I mean, at least some of these would have been sent out before, so would have been reflected in the budget previously used. But I expect we'll probably see a whole lot more of them because not a lot of people are just randomly dropping in town hall to say hi to, you know, Michelle and stuff like they used to. So maybe we should add five hundred or so to the postage budget?
That's fine, if you want, if you want to do that.
Does that sound reasonable to, to the two of you or do you have a different number in mind?
No, I think five hundred is a good number.
I mean, if we don't use it, it'll always go back to the general fund anyway, so.
Right.
And Chris?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm trying to write, I'm trying to, I'm trying to write the, what the banner would be for this thing. What are you talking about?
The, the amount that we should add.
Yeah. I, I guess it's hard to say, but five hundred would, would be helpful. I don't think it would throw us off too much.
Okay.
I wonder if that could be some of the, if we get any more COVID money, would that be, that would be covered in something like that?
Um, I don't know, Dee. This is something we have to do every year and I don't see that happening.
Okay.
I mean, obviously we can use the COVID money if we got reimbursed for things to offset it, but, um, but for that, for that, um, particular function, I don't think so.
Yeah, some of the other COVID things, like we may be actually, we may actually be able to re- request that. Uh, but to do so, we would have to at a minimum show that we spent X amount more this year than last year before COVID. And to show that this is the difference that we expect was related to COVID because it wouldn't be the entire amount.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, you know, Russ, when you were talking to, um, to Therese, did she happen to mention how many of these of the costs that she might have spent mailing these things out on a yearly basis?
Not that I asked her, but I could check.
Cause that would be helpful to know.
Yep.
So.
I will send her an email.
Okay. Okay, can we move along? I think we have a plan on this.
And, and based on our general consensus, uh, it, in the budget worksheet, the one nineteen, that is the last one available for us on SharePoint, I updated postage all departments to forty-five hundred from four thousand for proposed twenty-twenty-one. We were right at the maximum of, of using all of it already anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any course?
There is none.
Um, what about public comment? Is there any public? There's no public here. What happened to Tara? Did she leave?
Thing about stamps and took off.
Good heavens.
We must be getting boring.
Yeah. Good for us. We're getting boring. The, um, gosh, it was something that I want, I'll, I'll remember before the end of the meeting, uh, before we launch into the budget, which, oh, we have a non-public. We have a non-public tonight?
It's a very short non-public under reputation. But I may not need to have it because I did email you, um, the updated document that came from the court.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, that's what I wanted to, to talk about. I wanted to talk about Mont Vernon.
Yes, yeah.
Um, did you all get the pictures that I sent?
I did see those pictures.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're, you're saying, Chris, that it's not complete, the job isn't done?
It's not.
Okay.
There's, there's another, there's another at least load that needs to be removed, at least a load.
Okay.
So. And so if you can, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, um, you know, payment is, is wanting to be made. And I can come over any day this week and take a look if he, once he feels like he's gotten everything.
I will speak with him tomorrow because I'm expecting to.
Okay.
And when you make your motion for the accounts payable, you can make a motion for us to hold that check until we're satisfied the job is complete.
Okay.
I think that's the way to go.
Okay, good.
So he just wasn't gonna leave that as such? He just didn't have a time to go back?
I don't know. I really don't.
Oh, you haven't talked to him?
No.
Oh, oh.
No, I, I was under the impression it was done. He asked me if he could be paid and when I spoke with Chris today, I was going to go over, but Chris said she would go over and, um, and it's not.
Okay. Furthermore, furthermore, that the, the person that owns that extremely small lot on Deer Meadow Road um, who's put a, a Lowe's shed up with a little front door and two chairs and a washer and dryer behind the building. That, you, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it seems, it seems that she or he is, is living there or planning. Okay, it seems, it seems that she or he is, is living there or plans to move there. And I just, I don't know whether. We haven't issued any. We haven't issued any permits as far as I can remember on that site. I don't really understand what's going on. Uh, perhaps this is something for Roy Fanjoy to look into as our health inspector?
I believe Roy is aware of it. Um, and Russ, correct me, is Tom Bay aware of it as well? Russ?
Whoa, Russ. Sorry, my headset is, uh. Um, so I am aware of it, and I believe Tom Bay is not aware of it yet, but I can make him aware of it. And I have told the neighbor as soon as she moves in to let me know because then we can issue a cease and desist.
Well.
And there is an issue with the setback.
Well, it's right on the edge of it being an issue or not.
Yeah, we're not really sure for sure, but.
Well, I don't think that there's any structure that can be within 20 feet of the road.
That's, well, if it's within the 20 feet of the road, it's at 23 feet out. Cuz me and Emmett went and measured it. If it's from the property line, it's like 18 feet out.
Yes, it, it's not legal, the way that they've done that. I mean, I. So.
I mean, I, I believe you're right. It's just a matter of. How much we can argue it, and if we send her a letter saying she needs to move the shed. Then she just moves it two feet backwards and we're still in the same predicament we are in right now.
Right.
But if she moves in, that's a totally different story, and that is a much, much easier to prove. Is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, there's no, there's no electric, there's no utilities there.
Correct, it's not a habitable location. So the minute she moves in, we could definitely do a cease and desist at that point. No argument.
Yeah.
So this person own the land? Does she have a deed to that land? She does?
Yes.
I think she does, yeah.
But I just wondered, she, I think we have something they can live in, um, in this town for a couple of months in a mobile home or.
But it's not a mobile home or an RV, it's not a livable structure.
Yeah, no, I, well, I, yeah, I said, I don't understand how she wants to do that myself, but I haven't ever seen it. Every time I go by, I never see anybody there anyway, but.
Same, I've been trying to go by periodically. I did not see the washer and dryer. I think I'll have to drive by again.
Oh, no, I didn't see that.
It's tough. Right behind the place. Um, I don't, I don't know what they intend to do. It's about a third the size of the shed.
Of course, you use them without the utility service of any kind.
It's a trick. So, um, anyway, I think, you know, before, before they invest any more money in something that. That is not gonna be inhabitable. Um, I don't, I don't know, um, Dave, what do, do you know of the planning board regulations? They must have something to say about this.
Um, I believe Russ has already mentioned it, and so have you, that like we have setback rules. But until it's something like a building or, or it's a setback, that's really all that's regulated. For the most part, until you're talking about subdivisions.
That's crazy.
Cuz we, we don't have, we don't have a ratified building permit, and so we don't have a normal code enforcement setup. And so we don't, like, the only thing that we require any kind of building permit for is a house. Uh, whereas in a lot of other places, it would be for a garage or a shed or whatnot, would, would also incur that. So we don't really have a process for anything unless it is a house or is being intended to be used as habitable space. Such as accessory dwelling. Those are really the only kinds of things that we have much on, unless it's something like a setback.
But this one thing I remember in my back of my mind is they can, nobody can stay in Webster in a. Trick, you know, like camping or anything, was just for so many months unless they change that law.
That's seasonal dwelling, so they can, seasonal dwelling, I believe, yeah. That's how some of the summer cottages. That's like a summer cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah, a shed, I don't think a shed really meets that requirement.
No, no, I don't either. No, that, no, I don't either. That's why I'm saying that we, there is, um. Even if she was gonna live in there, she can't do that. There's, must have to be a, well, I don't know, if you're camping, I suppose you don't need a bathroom.
We could potentially send the person a letter and asking what their intent is for the property. I mean, that's pretty much where we are right now. And just say, if we've noticed aware that you've been putting these things on the property, we just wanted to make sure you were aware that. It's not habitable.
Now, that's a good idea.
I like that idea. That's pretty.
And you wanted to come before the select board or something, or?
Uh.
I don't think there's any reason for it to come to us. I mean, if they have questions about what they're allowed to do, Russ should be able to answer all of it. And I can put my contact information right in the letter and say, if you have any questions about the zoning or building requirements.
Well, Russ, I, before you go to any, before you do anything, you should call Trace on this. Because Trace has been dealing with this woman. Long before you were born. She's been.
How long?
It's a long time.
Oh, is that the one that put the tent up originally? Long time ago. So it's the same woman that owns that property? Oh, jeez.
So, um, yeah, see, see what Trace has to say about this. And, and how she thinks we should proceed. Cuz I think that there's been back and forth in writing between the two of them. I may be wrong on, there's at least been a back and forth. Whether it was documented or not, I don't know.
But knowing Trace, it was documented, and I should be able to get it.
Okay, that's where I would start if I were you. So, okay, um, so with regard to Mont Vernon, then. Um, so I would, I'd make a motion to pay Josh Dow. The sum of 2,000. What is it? 2,670?
I, that's part of the check warrant, correct?
It is part of the check warrant, and I think that the amount is, um, somewhere like 2,800.
Okay.
I think we can, so, so correct me if I'm wrong here, Dana, sorry to interrupt you, Chris, but. Correct me if I'm wrong, the way to do this is to approve the check warrant with that check held until service is fully rendered?
I would recommend doing it that way.
Okay, why is that?
So we could, the job.
Well, I've, it's part of the, um, accounts payable run. And that way, you're insured that we keep the check and not give it to them until the job is done. And we do need, I mean, the other way you could do it is to not approve that particular check, and we would have to remove it from the run. Which means we'd have to rerun it in two weeks if.
I, I don't wanna do that.
So I'm hoping you don't do it that way.
No. So, oh, Josh's junk removal. Okay, um, $2,800. I, that wasn't his original estimate.
No, his estimate was 20, uh, 680, I think.
Yes, and so why are we paying 2,800?
Well. That was the hours he said that he put in, and I don't know as far as quotes. There usually is a little wiggle room between a quote and when the bill comes.
Uh, I didn't know that.
So, um, if. That was a decision, you know, I, I thought it appeared to be reasonable, but, um, we certainly could talk to him about that.
Well, I just, you know, he, he, we, we knew that he was suggesting that repairing the roof was gonna be a couple of hundred dollars.
Well, and that's, I think maybe that's where I was thinking that, um, that, uh, repair the wall and the roof of the shed.
Were those done?
No.
They haven't been, no.
The wall, the wall, you mean that, the, I see what you're saying, okay. Um. Okay, so did he submit this bill again then for 2,800? Or?
There should be a bill in your run that he submitted.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a big run, but yes, he did submit a bill.
Okay, and I thought that bill was the 20, whatever it was.
26.
Yeah.
Nope, so I'm looking at it now. It is, when you scroll through the dot, the PDF, uh, page 36 of 79. Josh's junk removal, invoice for property cleanup at 18 Mount Terr, Vernon Terrace. Metal removal, 800 bucks, tires removal, 200, trash, 1,000, wood brush, 800, total due 2,800.
Okay, great.
Does not show hours.
Okay.
The, the totals for each type of item.
Okay, um, great, so then I would, I'm gonna make a motion here. By God. Um, I need to get this, so. Um, I move to pay, uh, is it, should we say Josh Dow or Josh's junk removal? Josh's junk removal. Probably.
Okay. Yeah.
2800 dollars pending. A final certified cleanup or. Um, or pending acknowledgement that the property is completely cleaned. And.
Is that pending job completion?
That's fine. Um, although he might think that he's completed the job. Well, but that, but if we, if we're saying this, then obviously he has not.
Well, he won't after I talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah. Pending job completion. That's fine. So is there a second?
Oh, second.
I thought she already did.
Oh, that was the second?
No, I will second it. I was.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then with regard to, um, you know, employing him to repair. To repair the, the roof of that, if the roof is really the big problem. Um. He had estimated 200 dollars. I don't think that that's reasonable. I think that it's gonna be more.
He did indicate it would be more than 200.
Oh, good, okay, but he didn't indicate how much more?
Well, he talked a figure of 500, and I said it couldn't be more than that, so, um.
Okay.
And so we went.
Okay, so.
I thought we'd said last time that we wanted him to do that.
We do want him to do it, yeah, so, um.
I think it was a little bigger job than what he had thought at first, until he got into looking at it and saw what it needed. And this is just for a plywood wall and, uh, tar paper for, um, the roof.
Well, the roof is getting the plywood and the tar paper.
Oh, okay, I thought it was a wall as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, I think everything else is okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I would make a motion to pay Josh's junk removal up to. 500 dollars for the repair of the roof on the shed. At 18 Mount Vernon Terrace.
Second. Okay, Dave. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Dee's on a roll. She can have seconds tonight.
No, I'll share.
Okay.
You know, you gotta do it fast, Dave, come on.
I used to, and, and then people got mad cuz I was taking all of them.
Now, now, everyone calm down.
Um, should we, uh, since we've sort of. Tuck, begun to tou, touch on the accounts payable thing, do we do accounts payable and payable manifest?
Sure.
Sounds great.
Okay, so.
So my quick question for Dana on this is some of these things, for example, the fire department dryer. Awesome to see it on there, and then it's finally happening. Do we need to do anything specific to note that? Uh, this was for encumbered fund, from encumbered funds, or no?
We have done that, yeah.
Okay, so just because we encumbered them already, we don't need to think about it in.
You don't need to worry about that now, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
So are you on the payroll manifest or are you at accounts payable?
Accounts payable.
Okay, so. Um, Dee, can you get into SharePoint? Can you see all this stuff?
I could see all, I have the, I have the copies of the accounts payable and all that.
Okay, great.
In my little hand.
Okay. Um, all right, did you have, did you both have a chance to look this over?
Yep, um, can you briefly touch on the void check?
Oh, um, if you notice at the bottom of the check, there is a check for, and I'm gonna get it wrong probably right now, Whitmore. Um, Enterprises or, um.
Whitmore Public Safety Group.
Yeah.
Oh, I have it right here, hold on now.
No, it's Bill Witham.
Um, which is why, yeah, so I was the one that was putting that in, and in Accufund, if you press the wrong button for vendor. You get the wrong vendor, so I, I, I wanted to, it was another bill for Whitmer Public Safety Group. And not Bill, uh, Witham. So we don't owe Bill Witham any money. That 26518, we owe Whitmer. And we will pick it up next time, which is why I wanted it voided.
Okay.
And by the way, I won't be doing this anymore, so it's just wonderful.
Are you loving your free time?
I love it, yes.
Okay, I would move. To accept the accounts payable check warrant for 125, 2021. In the amount of 57,709 dollars and 83 cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we can go to the payroll manifest. Any questions or? Comments on this? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I move to approve the payroll manifest for pay period 104, 2021. Through 117, 2021, in the amount of 20,647 dollars and 87 cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There is a, um, one motion. For. Oh, to pay VHB. Uh. Sorry, I request the trustees of trust funds issue a check for 2,000. 2 million?
And I, I think there's an extra two comma in there. I believe that would be 2,000, unless it's 22,000.
No, it's 2,000. 2,000.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
2 million.
It's just, you can look at the bill, it's 2,000.
Okay, good. A, a check for 2,188 dollars and 23 cents to VHB for invoice number 333. 332 dash 20. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culver Capital Reserve Fund. There's a T at the end of Culver. And I guess Dee, you're gonna second this.
Oh, second it.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you've made that change, Dana?
This is just a guide for you, it's not official, um. This is just a guide for you. It's not official, um, record.
Oh, well, normally
I mean, your, your motion is official record, but my typing isn't.
Oh, good, okay.
Is what, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Um.
But I will fix it, yes, to answer your question.
Okay, and we have, we have some draft minutes that we need to, hopefully you've looked at those. Um, on, for twelve eight, so I have a question. Why are these minutes entered doubly on this?
I think the, um, what you're saying is that they're, they're in Word and they're also in a PDF.
Oh, okay, so the PDF
They're the same minutes.
I know, okay, yes, I just discovered that.
Not seen double, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right. So, um, let's see, I wanted to go to the one for twelve eight and now I can't find it. There it is. Twelve eight twenty-two. Um, there were a couple of things. Oh, for heaven's sakes. Nope. Dave, did you catch them? There were a couple of things on the minutes for twelve eight.
Twelve eight.
There's twenty-two budget worksheets.
I don't see twelve eight. I see twelve fourteen's and eleven nine, sorry, one nineteen.
Um.
Twelve eight there, Dave.
On, on, if you look at that agenda, um, we, we need to approve twelve eight, twelve fourteen and one eleven. And I have
I'm just looking in the, the SharePoint document for this one and I don't see it.
Yeah, it's right. It's, it's on one of those blocks, um, before you actually go into the, the more detailed part. And let me see if any of the corrections that I made remained. Um, I don't know who took these minutes. What I'm looking at is the, are the minutes from twelve eight that don't have any header on them or anything like that? They're, they're probably the one in, the one in Word.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm finding it. Bear with me one moment.
Okay, um, okay.
Oh, okay, I see you're looking in the draft minutes, uh, specific folder. I was looking at the draft minutes in the folder for tonight's meeting. So that's my mistake. So now, now I see them. So let me go quickly read them.
Okay, well, yeah, this, okay. So while he's doing that, um, Dana, do you, are you looking at them?
Um, I will be as soon as I figure out how to get in there.
It's the AA folder.
I have them up too now. I can see that the header is missing. I don't know where that happened.
So Russ, did you take these?
Yes, these are my minutes.
Okay, so can you go down to the third paragraph that begins with Isabel?
Yes, I see it.
Okay, her last name is B R I N T N A L L, Brent Knoll.
Okay.
Okay, then, if you go down, skip the next paragraph. And if you go down to the paragraph that begins with Mike Arpino.
Yep.
Okay, now go down six lines and at the end of that line, it says Mr. Aprino. So just put an R in there.
Oh, the P and the R are backwards, okay.
Then if you skip the Vicky Meyer paragraph and go to the next paragraph, just, um, can, um, correct Brent Knoll again.
Can do.
Yep, and there, there's one on the first line and there's one on the third line. Brent Knoll. N A L L.
Just gonna highlight them so they're easy to see.
Okay. And then go down three paragraphs to where it says Bruce Lampson. There's no T on the end of Copart. I don't believe.
Okay.
But you should check that. And then in the next, in the next paragraph, on the second line, you've got Root, Root Johnson, which is kind of a cool name for him.
But it's not right.
Um, and, and the other, the only other comment I had is just a, it's not um, it's three, three paragraphs from the very, very bottom. It begins with Ms. Corliss.
Yep.
And so just to do away with the apostrophe S. Ms. Corliss commented.
Can do.
Okay, great, thank you. I thought those were pretty good notes, by the way. It was a very lengthy meeting.
Yeah, I try to capture what everybody says in a public hearing because they're gonna look for it.
Yeah, no, that was good. So.
Clock ticking. That's funny.
Who's clock?
I don't know. It's not mine.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean this noise? Yeah, I'm making that. I'm sorry, I won't make that.
It was like a, it was like a ticking tock, a clock.
A ticking tock.
Yeah, I can't speak.
Tick tock, tick tock. My clock does that, but I can't hear it over the headset, so I don't think it's mine. No, it, it's really, really quiet. I'd have to go like right up next to it.
No, I don't hear it now.
No, it, it was me, I promise you.
Okay, I believe you.
Yeah. So has everybody finished reading these?
Lots of words.
In that, uh, Ms. Brent Knoll paragraph, um, that was where we were talking about, uh, conservation offsets. And the last two, uh, sentences there, it's like when Hemingway asked all of what energy directly if they would be willing to offset the wetlands impacts. Uh, and Mr. Chatplain responded that all of what energy would be willing to offset the impacts to wetlands. I thought I was talking about the uh, whole concept because we were talking about forests and stuff at that point, not necessarily wetlands. So I thought it was, if he was willing to do, uh, the nature conservation offsets.
Huh.
Which would be a much more broad than just wetlands.
Well, he did say to Betsy Janeway that he would be willing to offset them.
Okay, and so he was, okay, maybe I did it then as well because there was something for later in this as well about that. Um, so that makes sense then. I probably would have tried to like ask him directly so that he would have to answer her. So. Okay, that makes sense then. I'm fine with that.
Hey, Dee, are you
I am fine and I'll read it again anyway when I put it in the paper, so.
That's true.
Yes, I do.
So is everybody all set?
Yep, sounds like a plan.
Okay, so I move, I move to accept the minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go to twelve fourteen. Uh, and I had read them and I thought that they were fine.
Uh, the portion that I would actually like to have a little bit more information put in there is when we did this, uh, for the police department section, talking about their server and the email costs. Um, I know that I made a comment about we could put that on the server if we were having to host the server. And that they had said they were going to, uh, let us, uh, what was the phrase they used? They were gonna do the cost analysis on if it made sense to do that versus the cloud. And we have not seen any of that.
Uh-huh.
And so I, I would like this to reflect that. I don't have exact language to put into this paragraph for that. But I would like to reflect that I requested, maybe it's just Dave Hemingway requested that the uh, local email be considered and mainstay was going to provide a cost analysis for that option.
Now, did, does mainstay actually know that they're doing that?
They were the ones that told us.
Okay.
Dave, would you say that again, that you, you requested that local email be considered?
Uh, local server based email be considered. And mainstay was going to provide a cost analysis.
And mainstay said they were gonna provide cost analysis?
Yeah, for if it made sense to be on the local server versus the cloud option.
Okay. Thank you, I'll take care of it.
Dee, are you okay with these, with these minutes?
Yes, that's fine.
Twelve fourteen, Dave, are you okay with the rest of them?
Yep.
Okay, I move to accept the minutes for the select board meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty as amended.
Second.
Oh.
Dee, Dee beat you.
Okay, that's okay.
All right.
You gotta be faster there, Dee.
I know. It's getting late, I'm getting tired.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then January eleventh. Um, I, I was okay with them as well.
Me too.
Yeah, these were pretty straightforward.
Okay, I move to accept the minutes for January eleventh, twenty-two-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Dave, I had to beat you. But Dana was making a lot of noise. I didn't know if you heard me beat him.
I was trying to help you, Dave.
I was being patient.
Okay, um, should we the, the not public, I think, will be pretty brief?
Do we still need it or did we cover it?
I don't think we covered it.
We have one thing and, um, I don't, it's not on our agenda, but um, I was given a notice of intent to cut wood by Russell when I was in the office today.
Oh, yes.
Addy mock And also the impact fees. Discussion. Both of those are sitting in there.
Yeah, I just added that last meeting you asked what the balances were.
Okay. So, um, yeah, we need to approve, that's the addy mock, that's addy mocks, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, at the, on White Plains Road.
Right. Right. Oh, my God, I keep losing this. Um, so we don't need a motion for this. It just, I don't think, it just gets signed?
Yeah, must, yeah, must have to get signed.
I believe you're correct. I think that's what we did the last intent to cut. Sorry, intense turn new to me. Should be my second one ever.
Wow, we'll have plenty of them, don't worry.
Okay, and then the, the impact fees. I remember seeing this somewhere here. Impact fee, there we are.
So the, the summary of it is that we've got about sixty-eight thousand worth of impact fees.
Yep.
Um, what I'm not sure of, based on this and the other impact fee document, which is the uses, is, is, is this what we have for the towns portion or is this the total? And so we have to subtract the school portion?
I believe that that's part of the zoning code of where the, how the impact fees would be used. And I believe you'd have to subtract, um, out the other uses.
Okay, so these are the total amounts, not the town usable amounts. Got it?
Yeah, that's right.
When do we find out what the town usable amount is?
I would have to do the math, but, um, I could do that. It would be sixty-eight thousand less all the uses that were town usable. And I don't, I there's a school in there and I think there's a few other items that you have to use the money for.
Yeah, the, so a typical impact fee is five thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Uh, and of that, three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five is the public schools. The public safety building gets eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Municipal office gets three hundred and seventy-seven. Solid waste facilities gets three hundred and sixty-six. If it is a non-residential, then it's just a small, like a few cents per
Yeah, I'm seeing it.
Public safety and municipal.
Yeah. The, um, Dana, do you have a sense of whether the number of students in, in the school has been affected by COVID?
I really don't, Chris, but that's a great question. I could call the school and find out.
Because I heard a report on NPR the other day that, that some of, some of these towns, um, I don't know if it was necessarily New Hampshire, it must have been because I think it was NHPR that I heard it on, uh, had lost a number of their students to private schooling where kids could continue to attend school um, face to face, whether that's a good idea or not, I don't know. Um, but anyway, that schools were losing a lot of revenue as a result of that.
I'll call the school, uh, the school district and ask about the census.
Okay, well.
And I have a question about that. There's no other, like, we couldn't take any of this money to, like, um, tar the parking by the town offices or anything. Because I, I mean, I'm just, you know, we, I mean, the schools
For that.
A small portion, yeah.
Yeah, that should be usable for that because that would be a capital improvement that
Well, that's what I thought, and that's because when I was on the school board all those years and on the finance command, I know, you know, we, we talked, the town could do things and all. And I, and I remember, I forget what, I don't have that And I, and I remember, I forget what, I don't have that copy of that, that paper. But, so I, but for sixty eight thousand dollars, I would think we could start putting it towards, I know we've wanted to. To tar that, you know, parking lot and everything for a long time. Or maybe like somebody told me, those stairs on going up to the town hall are pretty dangerous. Especially with its icing and all that, but they're not very, and then you walk down onto the, the tar and it's like, I'm very uneven. And so.
The worst part is the tar at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, on the bottom of the steps, so I'm, I'm wondering if we could use any of this to do, start anything like that.
I think that's a really good idea, you know, any, any, as soon as we touch that driveway. Either the driveway. Either driveway, above or below. You know, we've, we're gonna get into ADA complacency. And so it opens up a whole can of worms, so.
We should actually be able to use impact fees towards ADA compliance as well.
Yes, we should. Except that, yes, absolutely right, except that when, when you start getting into the, the ADA. Compliance thing, you know, now you're looking at solving a lot of different problems rather than just paving. And all of it needs to be seen to, it all needs to, we, we need to take care of it. I think we need a plan. And I think that it would be, I think that it would be actually a really good priority to put on our project list. To get, to get up, 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 below, below and above, both of those driveways repaired. We saw what happened to poor Sally Embley.
Oh, did she fall? I didn't see.
It was terrible, her head was bleeding.
Oh my God, oh, she really fell.
She really fell. And it was because of that difference in the tar, what Dave was talking about. You know, there's that little divot there.
Yeah, right, it's.
And her foot got caught on the, anyway, and, and she lost her balance and went back, so.
And it might be something, we could even maybe do some, a railing on one side to get down, down around to the parking, you know. On to the right hand side, if I'm looking at the town hall to the right, the small parking lot there. So, or, just to be safe, because that can get slippery and all that stuff, you know, in the rain or snow and ice and.
Right. So, well, I, I would imagine, once we begin this project, we should start. By, by getting somebody from the, the ADA people, some of those people, they come over. And they look at your situation and they tell you what you need in order to be compliant. And so that would be a good place to start, I think.
You know what I can do? I can call Fred Reagan from, he's the facilities manager at the Merrimack Valley School District. And I bet he would help us out. At least, and he could tell us to where to go in the, you know, the right direction anyway, because we've been, you know, the school district's been doing this for a long time, so.
That would be great.
Okay, I'll do that.
If you can set up a meeting, Dee.
Oh, okay.
Any, I mean, you're, you're. I think you're the busiest during the day of the three of us.
Well, I can fool around and get out of there, sometimes it's good to get out and. Forget the other stuff, so, I don't know, because, you know, that.
I don't think we all need a meeting with, with Fred, I think what we want is to get a contact from him of who we should. Call to come do the ADA evaluation.
But I think if you talk to him, you know him at all?
I, I've, I've seen him, but that's about it.
Well, he's come a long way in the school district and he's really in charge of a big, big place, so. Let me talk to him and, and, you know, what the heck, if he even shows up for an hour and we at least know. And then you could ask him questions and then he can set us in the right direction, because I know he knows tons and tons of people. Doing all the stuff for the district, okay, I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Thanks, Dee.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'd like to be at that, I'd like to be there with that, I want to hear what he has to say.
Oh yeah, we'll have one, we'll have a, a meeting with all of us.
Good. Well, I hope Dave can come.
Three minds are better than, well, matter of fact, Dana would be good, the Russell, you know, five minds are better than one, so. I'll count and I'll tell, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what I have here. I know his mother just died, but that was about a week ago, so I'm sure he's back to work.
So is that, other than the budget? We have a non-public.
We don't, yeah, we don't need that non-public, Chris, because of, I was just going to tell you what I had sent you out. On the, where we were.
Okay.
Yeah. When we did the agenda, I told Russell to put it on because I hadn't gotten the paperwork yet, thank you.
So then we can, we can leap right into budget work.
We're leaping.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, where is budget worksheet?
So I guess the suggestion for starting then would be the police tab.
Um, I am only seeing the one four twenty one budget worksheet, is that the most recent one?
This one for the nineteenth, it's a little further down.
Zero one nineteen, twenty twenty one.
Budget, got it. Nope, that's not it.
Are you looking at, so when you go to the main select board SharePoint file set? It's the second one from the bottom.
Okay, let me get there.
Budget worksheet as of zero one nineteen, twenty twenty one.
Okay. So. Do I, do I go in on select board meeting for today? Oh, no, 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 I see it, I see it.
We should have put it in today, but we didn't.
Okay. So, all right, so Dave. You wanted to start with police?
Yep, because we gotta put in the cruiser.
Right.
So it looks like the only place that that can actually fit is vehicle maintenance, they had actually planned on decreasing that. But I mean, it was still only twenty five hundred bucks before. But basically, we're gonna have to put in. At least the insurance portion of the cruiser. And then the other thing that we'll have to consider is. That they have the equipment that will need to go into it as well. And there's, I assume that can be in that equipment and repairs section. That's where Dana's highlighting right now. So we probably want to. Let's see, so it's about twenty one thousand for the. Insurance check is what we're expecting. Or was it twenty, almost twenty two thousand, I think it was?
Uh, I think it's twenty one, he says twenty thousand nine hundred from the insurance company.
And, but that's after the thousand that they were also expecting to get as, from the other insurances, the deductible, correct?
That's right.
So, so, so the expectation is that there will be about twenty two. Thousand coming in that way. That will then go out towards the cruiser. Which leaves us eleven thousand from the other funds. And, and then on top of that is then the equipment. To be put in and or upgraded, fortunately, any upgraded or new equipment would be. Seventy five percent covered by Primex, he said. But based on the thirty three thousand quote, and the chief saying that it normally runs forty three thousand. For the, the cruiser with equipment, we're looking at about ten grand minus whatever, so even if that was all of it, it would be twenty five hundred. So. I think we can probably get by with only saying like an extra thousand for the equipment and repairs. And that would basically cover the extra slash new equipment and the equipment transfer. And then anything else that was left over would, would be between those two would then come from the. The ETFs and CRFs. Chris, I see you put in twenty two thousand there, but that would be twenty two thousand above and beyond the. Amount that had already been budgeted. So it'd actually be like twenty four, twenty five thousand.
That's what it needs to be?
Yeah. Because the vehicle maintenance budget would still be expected to be used normally.
Oh, I see.
And so it would be the twenty two thousand in addition to that.
So why don't we make it? Twenty two, twenty three, for twenty five thousand.
I think that makes sense. And equipment and repairs is the one above, if it's sitting at a thousand, they didn't expect to make any changes there. I, I don't really. Know exactly what we should. Consider here, because I know it, there is a cost for moving and installing that we're not gonna get out of. And then there is the seventy five percent coverage for anything that's an upgrade. Or needs to be put in that we didn't have. So I think we need to bump that by at least a thousand. But then maybe say that that's good enough. Because I don't want to just go hog wild on the budget here. But I think we need to do that. I don't know what the rest of you feel about that after talking, hearing what Phil had to say earlier.
But we still, um. We're gonna get that money back, right? I mean, the insurance is gonna pay the twenty two thousand. We have to expend it, but then we're gonna get reimbursed.
Yeah, so we, we can put that as expected revenues and.
Yeah, so, so and we explain it, it'll be basically, it's not gonna be really that much different. I mean, it'll be different to look on the budget, but when they, you explain to the voters that it's gonna be reimbursed, that's gonna help a lot.
Yes. Yeah, this, this will look a lot higher, it's, it's higher because of wages and making. The wages competitive, and because there's this giant purchase for the. The police cruiser that will be completely offset in revenues, so it's not actually additional taxation.
Dave. So we've got, we've got this twenty five thousand dollars, twenty two thousand of which. Will go toward the purchase of the car?
Yes.
And then we need to cut, where is the rest of the big chunk of money for this coming from?
So the other eleven thousand for the car. If you looked at what Phil sent. But is basically coming from the two, the ETF and the CRF, so there's. What was it, the police vehicle maintenance, which has about ninety six hundred in it. And we've also got the police cruiser one, which is ninety four fifty nine for the balance of it right now.
Phil is suggesting ninety five hundred from the police vehicle maintenance expendable trust. And thirty.
Equipment.
Well, he's just got police vehicle, I'd have to look and see.
Okay, so police vehicle would then be the police cruiser, which we see as line number six.
Yeah, yeah, and then. From the police department. Thirty four thirty three from police, equipment expendable trust fund. So I think he really means the capital reserve fund, doesn't he, for the cruiser?
Yeah, so we've got a police cruiser CRF, which currently has nine thousand four hundred fifty nine in it. We have a police equipment CRF, which has eighteen thousand five hundred seventy six in it. And we have a police vehicle maintenance ETF, which has nine thousand six hundred and eighty four in it. The police equipment was where it was considered to be. Like that's where the base radio and stuff of that nature was expecting to come out of.
Right.
So much like the police cruiser variant, I'm sure we can use it, but then we'll have to pay into it more. At least in subsequent years, if not this year.
No.
Why can't we take the eleven thousand right out of police equipment?
You mean between the twenty two thousand and the thirty three thousand?
Yeah.
Well, so the part that, like, police equipment is not designed for a vehicle. So that would be like upgrades or installs of lights or whatnot, we can probably take out of that. But I don't think we can take the whole police cruiser out of it. But police vehicle maintenance, which, if you're able to see my highlight, because I see you're on the same thing. This section over here was actually, according to, to Phil and Steve. Was specifically done for being able to cover repairs and stuff for accidents, and stuff that was up above and beyond normal. So this is where we can take a lot of that stuff from, and then some out of the police cruiser portion as well. Thankfully, they already have funds in them to be able to do that. Being that we are expecting to use the police vehicle maintenance. ETF, we should probably plan to put into it again, as part of the warrant article, though.
Well, maybe the police equipment fund. Could accommodate. The twenty five percent that the town is gonna have to pay. To get that equipment into the new cruiser?
I would expect that that CRF probably can do that, but that CRF for the most part was. Or at least my understanding of it, was that that CRF was mainly at the current time being expected to be used towards the base radio.
And how much was that expected to be?
I don't remember. But yes, I, I believe we can probably take most, we, we, we can definitely take some out of police equipment. And I don't, we should fund that more than we already are. The main difference there for that capital reserve fund would be maybe next year we'd have to put more into it.
So wasn't the amount of money that was to be spent. Getting the cruiser, you know, getting the equipment for the cruiser about ten thousand dollars?
Generally.
Okay, so if Primex is gonna cover seventy five percent of that, then we are left with covering twenty five hundred dollars. So.
Yeah, that, that's, we can think of it that way, yes.
And so why can't we take twenty five hundred out of there?
That might be possible, we don't currently have an invoice, so we haven't approved how or where that funding is coming from. But that might be possible, we would have to see specifically whether that can come out of there, or whether. It even needs to be the twenty five hundred, I'm actually banking on it being a fair amount less than twenty five hundred. Because if the average amount of equipment that's added to it is ten grand. And Primax is going to cover seventy five percent of anything new that's needed. Then that would mean that our maximum would be the twenty five hundred, but as Steve just finished telling us earlier tonight. We're also looking at being able to reuse a large chunk of the stuff that we already had for equipment. There are certain things like in, internal lights and some of the internal cages that can't be used, the sirens that got totaled. But the, the box, the external lights and a lot of that stuff, the front cages, he said they were able to reuse all of that. So that's why I suggested that we just add the thousand dollars worth into the normal. Pushing for a police equipment. And then we can use that to the, the normal ability. And then if we need extra, we can pull it out of this police equipment CRF.
So right now, the proposed warrant has five thousand dollars for police equipment? Are you suggesting that? Are you suggesting?
I'm not suggesting we change that.
Okay.
Mine was in the police.
Can I, can I? Can I, can I request that whoever's making that noise just mute yourself? Whoever that
My battery is dying.
Oh, okay.
That was Dana trying to find a battery then. Okay.
Okay. So Dave, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
So I'm not suggesting that we change anything about the police equipment CRF, which would be on the warrant article. My suggestion was for the police section itself, which was, I've got it highlighted now. If you go over to the police tab for the workbooks, it's the equipment and repairs budget line item for the police, which is currently a thousand dollars. They overspent, but did not expect that they would need to overspend again. And so my suggestion would be that we bump that up to two thousand instead of one thousand.
Oh, on equipment and repairs, is that where you were?
And then call that good enough, because then if they don't use it, it goes into general fund. And but if they do use it or they use similar to what they did last year, either way, we're in a better position for the budget. And then we don't have to touch or worry about the, the, the big problem with dealing with the CRFs and ETFs is that they don't get funded until the warrant article. Fortunately, the ones that we're talking about have funds in them. But I would suggest doing that in the equipment and repairs section here.
Okay. If you think that's gonna if you think
We've got the amount in the CRF already, so we don't need to worry about getting the funding in first. So it might actually make more sense to up the contribution to the CRF. Because then we definitely have it, the, the police equipment line.
Okay.
The proposed for twenty-twenty-one was the five thousand. And so if we upped that to, say, six thousand, then we're, because it's already got the eighteen and a half thousand sitting in it. But if we raise that, that can cover any of the amount for the cruiser extra plus whatever it was supposed to do originally. And worst case, then we don't, we don't need to do as much next year. Because that'll actually be making interest and stuff and already set aside as opposed to just sitting in the general budget to offset taxes again.
Well, hopefully.
And we, we are down still thirty thousand overall for the warrant article portion. Whereas the budget was, was already up, so I think this would be a more sensible place to do it.
Okay.
And then the police vehicle maintenance, how much was he suggesting we were supposed to take out of there? You'll find that email again.
I just saw.
It was ninety, oh, the one that has ninety-six eighty-four in it?
Ninety-five hundred from police vehicle maintenance expendable trust is what he said. So I would suggest that it probably makes sense for us to try to put five thousand back into that. Because then we can start to build it back up again. Because this is exactly the sort of thing that this is designed for.
Okay, let's see.
And so you can see down here, we're, we're still twenty-five thousand less than the previous warrant articles from twenty-twenty, so.
And well, I mean, we have a pretty, I think we're gonna have a pretty puny, puny warrant compared to the warrant that we had last year. I mean, that was a pretty ambitious warrant. So the fact that we're down doesn't surprise me, but I'm glad. I hope we can keep it down.
Good idea.
So let's see, looking at those changes, again, actually, we haven't touched revenues yet. So let's go to the revenue summary area. Let's see, do we have a insurances sort of thing? Dana, where would be the best place in the revenue summary to stick this? The insurance payment?
We don't really have, and I guess probably dividends and reimbursements.
Okay, that makes sense.
Would probably be the best.
So right now, that's sitting at three thousand. So we're expecting, what, the twenty-one hundred or twenty-two hundred? What is it, twenty-one ninety-nine, I think?
What is it? Did you say hundred we spend? Is it twenty-one thousand?
Twenty-one nine, let's see, oh, here we go. Twenty thousand nine hundred come from the insurance company, plus they're going after the extra thousand. So
So is that twenty-one nine?
Yep.
So that would make that twenty-four nine?
Twenty-four nine, yep. So twenty-four nine hundred. There you go. So overall total to be raised by taxes is up one point seven six percent, accounting for both the operating budget and warrant articles. And that's including the extra amount in the police section for the cruiser, which will be offset by revenues. Unfortunately, we are still expecting revenues to be down overall. But we're up one point seven six percent, including buying a cruiser. So I think that's a, a fair amount for, a fair way for us to go about talking about this budget.
That looks pretty good, actually.
Was there anything else besides the cruiser that we were still waiting for numbers on? Because I think that was basically the last things before we could finalize this.
I'm not aware of anything else.
Dana, I, I, do you, this is off the topic, off this topic directly right now. But do you happen to know whether any of the money, any of the gravel that Emmett bought for Pond Hill Road was on the class six portion of Pond Hill Road? Or was it the class five portion of Pond Hill Road?
Chris, I don't know. I'd be glad to ask him.
I'm I, I would appreciate it if you would.
Okay.
There's a, you know, there's a lower section to Pond Hill Road that was well-nigh impassable. And I don't know if the town regarded that as an emergency lane. I do not think so. But I don't know. But there were, there was, there were thousands and thousands of dollars that the town spent in the last month on Pond Hill Road, and I've not been down that road to see what's been done. I sincerely hope he's not trying to reclaim the backside of Pond Hill. But if it's an emergency lane, then I guess he would have to, but it's very costly to the town.
We were going to, maybe, maybe we should schedule that for our next session at some point is going over the emergency lanes, because we were going to look at all of those and see if we thought all of them were still appropriate. And, and that would give us that answer.
Yeah. Okay. I, I also think something that needs to be done really sooner rather than later is have, invite Tom Bay to a select board meeting to talk to him about doing our code enforcement work. It's, it's gonna be really important for the town soon to have him in that official capacity so that he can get into potential house sites and have a look around before anything goes in.
I believe Russ has actually been working on the code enforcement stuff already. Russ, do you have an update that you can share on that and where we are?
So I've typed out the procedures based on what I found in the book that we ordered on code enforcement. And I have a copy of that I can submit. It's just a basic outline of how everything's gonna go once Tom Bay is hired and the procedure steps. I wanted to talk to him about it. And I also wanted to make sure it was all correct. But I think that would be a legal question to make sure what's enforceable and what isn't enforceable with our current ordinances.
Right. Well, Sue Roth would have to be in on that and somebody from the Conservation Commission. And I certainly, you know, I have put in a lot of hours on working on this project. So I want to be involved in that too, Russ.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I used what was in the folder that was created by you previously to come up with the new steps that are
Yeah.
basically into a small, short outline.
Okay, okay, good.
So it sounds like it would make sense for Russ to finish talking with Tom about that and then to bring whatever that conclusion is to the board for us to look at or send it to us and then to schedule Tom to talk with us about it.
That's fine. How far away, you know, I mean, do you have, you have that work pretty much put together, Russ, or where are we on that?
I have the basic outline and a couple of questions I wanted to ask already set up and set aside.
Okay. So so if you, if you, if you can get that to the board between now and next Monday, Dave and Dee, could we talk to, could we talk to Tom next Monday?
Yeah, that's okay with me. Six-thirty, right? Are we at six-thirty?
Five, I think it's
I think the eighth is, it's, the eighth is five-thirty. I think we made the eighth five-thirty. Because Thursday, on the fourth,
Oh, yeah.
Am I in the right month? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because today is the twenty-fifth, right?
Yeah, so next Monday is a six-thirty meeting.
Okay, and then, and then we have the budget hearing at seven.
On the fourth.
I, I had that was six-thirty.
What was the budget hearing? No, that's seven.
Normally, it's at seven, I think, but I don't know. That's what I wrote down, but that could have been changed. Are we gonna do that remotely too, or are we gonna do, do that in the town hall?
Remotely. Yep.
Okay.
I know what you're thinking.
So I would, I would caution that with the next meeting being our last meeting before presenting the budget, that we don't want, as long as we make sure that Tom is a short portion so that we can make sure that we're all on the same page for what we want to do for presentation, that's fine.
Right.
Though I would also offer that the way that the budget is at this point, since I pretty much understand just about all of it, I am more than happy to present an overview and then on basically anything except for conservation, because I think it's just most important or most appropriate for Chris to do that.
No, that's well, I want
I don't know what you might want to present on Dee, but I don't want to take all of it, but I'm happy to do as, as much of it as
Well, I think we'll work that out on the first. It's good, it's good to sort of divvy things up a little bit and, and give everybody a voice on this stuff. So, and, and I think that you have, you know, you're right, Dave, you've got a really good understanding of this, so. But I want to make sure that everybody has a voice on it. So we'll figure that out on Monday. Dana, did we? Aaron Darrow, I talked to Aaron Darrow today about White Plains Road, and she is, I hope there's gonna be a meeting with Emmett this Thursday or Friday to go over there and look at the butter situation. Things are, I guess, I guess we don't need to talk about that now, but somewhere in the near future, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have to talk to Aaron. What did we, who did we say was gonna come in next Monday? Oh, Bruce, if we wanted to talk to Bruce about those
You wanted to
And or the impact fees.
Yeah, both of those impacting, yeah.
Okay, so, so that meeting is gonna start at six-thirty, so we can have, we can have Bruce right there ready to go at six-thirty. And then he can go to bed at seven.
So Bruce at six-thirty, what time is Tom Bay coming in?
Well.
Thank you. Now you have to call him first?
Yeah. I'm just thinking if it's a good idea.
I mean, we can put that off for a week and then do it after the, the budget.
Budget hearing, yeah, that's not that important, really. I mean, not for the budget hearing anyway.
Yeah, why don't we have, why don't we have Tom come in on, on the eighth?
Okay.
I think that makes more sense. And then we won't schedule anybody else for coming in.
The eighth is, is the one that we're expecting to be the department head meeting, correct?
It is a department head meeting, yeah. So you know, if Tom comes in on the night, on that night, have him show up at about seven thirty.
All right.
Actually, actually, I've got a really good idea. Since we're starting at five-thirty that night, why don't we have Tom come in at five-thirty? And we can get Tom over and done with and whatever else, whatever other kind of business we have to deal with. And then we can just go right into the department head meeting.
Okay. Sounds prior to me.
Okay, so see, see if Tom's willing to, to join us at five-thirty.
Okay.
Or quarter of six, somewhere in there.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. Dana, is there, is there any other part of the budget that you wanted us to take a look at?
No, I, I think the budget, I'm satisfied with where it looks. I don't know of any other parts that need adjustment.
Did you find out an answer about where we could get that technology reimbursement from? Can we use the fund for that?
Yes, yes.
Perfect, okay.
Dana, I had a question on the land use change tax. We're not proposing any revenues in that, from that for 2021. Is that because that now goes to conservation?
Yeah, I think I left that out because we don't know how much we're going to receive. So rather than count on something that we're not going to get, I chose not to put anything in there.
Okay, okay.
And also the town won't get any of it, so.
Yeah. There is, I have to look at that. Is, does the conservation get the entire amount? Is there a ceiling? No?
Yes, no, we get.
There is no ceiling. The warrant article was written as 50% and was amended during the meeting to 100% and passed as 100%.
Okay, thank you. I kind of forgot that.
Well, you weren't there, so you're forgiven.
I wasn't, yeah.
Stick a zero in the column to make.
I won't have that excuse next year, but, but yeah, so I guess, I guess I budgeted good on that one.
You did great. So. Okay. All right. Well, if we, if we are all set on that, then I would like to close the meeting.
I would like to suggest before you do that we call the budget finalized enough so we can publish a draft.
Are we ready for that? We've got green and pink and red and everything else all over it.
Well, it won't be this spreadsheet that goes up, but.
Well, what, what would go up?
What have you traditionally put up, I guess is my question.
It's normally been.
Similar to what's in the town report?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can. We can do that.
Okay, now, will that, will that require a motion?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't know.
No.
Just it's just informational, because it's not, it's not cut and dried, you know, yet.
Well, I was thinking you're going to have to have something available before your public hearing so that people can take a look at it. And want us to put it in the form that it's in the town report, we can do that.
That'd be the easiest probably to understand.
Probably. Yeah. So. I, I mean, after the, I mean, I look at it that as far as your purposes, you're done preparing the budget, but it could change after you hear input from people. So. You know, it's not final until it's posted by the 22nd.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we see how that looks then? How, I don't understand how you're going to transfer all of this into the format from last year. That's not going to be a tremendous job.
Well, I'm hoping that there's some sort of template in Leslie's computer records that I can just transfer. If not, it, I mean, it will just take some work, that's all.
Because I believe all of these basically came from that, correct? They're broken out into the worksheets?
Well, the worksheet I typed out. But I took them from the town report, yes.
Just think, you get it done this year, you won't have to worry about it next year. You're just filling the blanks.
Actually, I like doing that, so it will, it will go fine. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so are we ready to close the meeting tonight?
It's okay with me.
Dave?
So soon?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so I will move to adjourn this meeting, meeting of the select board at 9:27 PM.
Second. Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alrighty. I lost you.
Good night.
All right.